Okay, so good morning and welcome to the Senate Committee meeting for Wednesday, May 4th, 2022. All council meetings will be live streamed on the city's website and on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith. Ms. Drossberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. LaBelle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. After you recall, please restate your name and your neighborhood for the record, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Not only do the property owners of Bon Air not consent to anything but a green space to replace the school, we absolutely do not agree to reapportionment. It would harm our community. I am so looking forward to tree Pittsburgh coming to Bon Air to plant in Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space. This was read at my both funeral. Michael J. Mullen Reflection by Chief Battalion Chief Douglas Braskovich. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional, and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name, and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had the question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly, but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for many years to come. Mike was a loving, compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, and friend. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space is a needed reparations for Bon Air. Do your part. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Maisha Atkins. I do not see Ms. Atkins online, Madam President. Is she in chambers?
No, she's not.
Okay, thank you. Then our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill's Hoover and Homewood, Seoul, Republic of Korea. I am COVID negative. GIS, U.S. National Candidate for the Presidency 2024, Global Intelligence Society.org. Vote by voter verification is key. Mr. Ganey is not verified by voter, by any voter, in Pittsburgh for anything. This is zero. How y'all doing, Ganey? Can he say that in Deutsch, in Hongbo, in Hauser, in Espanol? Isn't this an international effort here? No quantity of cheerleading from middle school math deficient Pittsburgh Public School fathers, nor quivering from unidentified bodyguards will change that. Zero. Seventeen May 2022, Pennsylvania Allegheny County Primary Election. A core concern of Pittsburgh City Council is the vote. The Allegheny County Election Division, ACD, will not provide any of us voters with a voter receipt showing encrypting for whom we voted, not just that we voted, and will not permit any voter to verify his or her vote. The ACD equivalents in all other 3,005 U.S. counties similarly will not provide a voter receipt, will not permit vote by voter verification. The vote of an individual citizen is not under his or her or their control. The collective vote totals for any local, state, or national election in the United States is not under our, the electorate's, control but unelected ACEDs and their vote recording systems. Voter receipt again represents means encrypting for whom he, she, they voted, not just that we voted. The ACD for the seventeen May 2022 election and all other elections does not require signature to signature verification using a Pennsylvania state ID on nomination papers to appear on the ballot as a candidate. The signatures can be anything by anyone. I, in the Global Intelligence Society, position is that there is a black hole at the core of our U.S. Republican democracy. The current is the vote in the USA is grounded in nothing. Correction. Re-ground the vote using vote by voter verification and signature to signature verification for nomination paper ballot access via state ID. The local media, including reporters who are in this room, do not see this as a problem. It is the central problem for our democracy.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elena Zatsoff.
Good morning, council members. I am Elena Zatsoff. I've lived in the Oak Cliff neighborhood of South Oakland for forty-two years. Please excuse my raspy voice today. I am here today to talk about ordinance 2021-1906, the Walnut Capital rezoning of part of Oakland. As we have learned the hard way about zoning in Oakland, what could be built with this rezoning has to be considered, not the pretty pictures we are shown. There have been many substantive changes to this bill. Residents are confused about the process, heights, loss of OPRD, and its protective residential compatibility being replaced by something called Height Reduction Zone, a new green space category which can actually be a concrete path, setbacks versus step backs, changing signage requirements in comparison to the Oakland Plan. These are some of the many details which are very important and require time and dialogue with everyone for a diligent review. Hybrid town hall meetings where true exchange can occur need to happen. The three minutes provided to citizens at the public hearing is not adequate, just done because it's legally required. Questions don't get answered, nothing gets explained, there's no back and forth. Where are the section drawings the Planning Commission requested? Not the ones in the presentation to the Planning Commission, but new ones they requested for you that were to show the height and massing the zoning would allow with respect to the surrounding neighborhoods. Do they exist? Have they been given to you? And if so, why haven't they been made public? Now that this bill has been given back to you, please plan a series of town hall meetings on it. Other town hall meetings have been held on issues having much less of a long-term impact on residents. On a technical note, when you ask if there are any unregistered speakers who would like to speak, it's limited to those in council chambers, but coming down to council chambers is discouraged and limited in number. Since those joining virtually on livestream can't speak, please consider making the Zoom link public again. Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Mildred Sess.
My name is Millie Sess. I've been a resident of Oakland for more than forty years. Thank you for permitting me to speak in opposition of ordinance 2021-1906. And please send this legislation back to the starting gate. I've attempted to study 1906 legislation, and hope that you have too. I'm finding the terminology in the legislation is somewhat very, sometimes very confusing, and is often not precise from a layman's perspective. And this is very important as I try to figure out exactly what it means to my neighborhood. For example, when I heard and read about the green space, I thought it was a nice green park like Spot or Pathway. But recently, I heard that the green space can be paved or brick, but certainly does not have to be green. Seems odd, but I guess it's acceptable zoning terminology. Silly, silly of me not to know, I suppose. Built to line is another one confused me. This is not what a developer has, has the option to build to, but it's what they must build to, and it's very, very close to the sidewalk in the street. Besides the confusing terminology, there is a voluminous number of pages that one needs to read about 1906. The somewhat inaccurate to me terminology just adds another layer to decipher as one tries to figure out exactly what the zoning means. And there has never been a free-flow dialogue about 1906, so one can be sure that an interpretation is correct. Thus, we make exceptions, good or bad. In the early days, October, August, September, and October of 21, Walnut Capital simply illustrated their ambitious plans at some meetings. Questions were asked, but it really appeared to be more of a sales pitch, a marketing spiel. In my view, Walnut Capital simply showed what they wanted to do. They did not really want to have questions from the community. They needed to control the content. They wanted another bakery square. What followed was 1906 being introduced by our previous mayor. Revision was made by councilmen's office in Walnut Capital without true community input, and City Council decided to throw it on to the Planning Commission. Many in my community were prepared to give testimony to the Planning Commission. Those are not public dialogue sessions. They study legislation, ask questions, make recommendations. Also, those meetings got delayed for two months. Version one had already been amended to version two, and then the Planning Commission and City Planning added items, so I believe that the current version is version three. All of this was without any true dialogue with the public. We read, read, and reread. We ask questions of the Oakland Plan staff, and that's helped somewhat, but it seems that there's still no true dialogue to discuss items and answer questions about 1906. So I ask you to dump the current version, whatever it is, in 1906, and let this legislation begin again and go through the correct process that includes rigorous dialogue where we can ask questions, get answers, instead of guessing what we might see built next to our residential neighborhood in Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last registered speaker is Ikahanahau Makina.
Greetings. Inma ke alaka in. My title is Ikahanahau Makina, the Grand Inca to Aracua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. Today, I would like to read on to the record House Joint Resolution Three in the one hundred and tenth Congress First Session to acknowledge a long history of official depredation and ill-conceived policy by the United States Government regarding Indian tribes, and offer an apology to all Native peoples on behalf of the United States in the House of Representatives on January 4th of 2007. A joint resolution to acknowledge a long history of official depredation and ill-conceived policies by the United States Government regarding Indian tribes, and offer an apology to all Native peoples on behalf of the United States. Whereas, the ancestors of today's Native peoples such as myself inhabited the land of the present-day United States since time immemorial and for thousands of years before the arrival of Europeans ascended. Whereas, the Native peoples such as myself have millennia honored, protected, and stewarded this land that we cherish. Whereas, the Native peoples such as myself are spiritual people with a deep and abiding grief for our Creator for a millennia. Our people have maintained a powerful connection to our land as evidenced by our customs and our legends. Whereas, the arrival of Europeans in North America opened a new chapter in history of indigenous people, also known as Native peoples such as myself. Whereas, while establishing a permanent European settlement in North America, did their conflict with nearby Indian tribes, who were peaceful and mutually beneficial interactions did occur. Whereas, the foundations of English settlement in Jamestown, Virginia, and Plymouth, Massachusetts, and other cities.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward now.
We have one.
Thank you.
We've got three.
I believe I see Ms. Ludwig.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Les Ludwig, 6589 Rosemore Street, Pittsburgh, PA. And I'm glad to be able to be here with you today to discuss an extension of what I spoke about yesterday. We've got a problem. We're not prepared. Now, how do you stop a crazy man like Putin? You gotta get enough voices to create enough pressure that maybe he would even listen and stop the war. And so I took the time to go to Staples on Banksville Road, because there's a thousand stores, and through the computer system, this little toy is available. For $2, a buck of which would go to the Alzheimer Association, and another dollar, of course, for doing the artwork, et cetera. And what am I trying to create? I've brought samples for all of you council members, and I hope that you'll wear them with pride to say, "Stop the war," because that's the biggest protector that we have available right now. It's not too late. We have to try. Otherwise, God forbid, we'll be blown away like some of those buildings that we see on television. So with pride, little creativity, and stick it, and show the flag, and let's get everybody that can walk, talk, or has $2 in their pocket to try and stop the war. Because if we don't, God forbid, that it will come for the first time to our shore. May I present this little box to you for distribution to council members? And as a matter of fact, here, take this one, too. We're running out of time. We're on a timeline, and no one knows when we'll be attacked and from where. Will it be from a submarine off the shore? Let's hope for the best, and let's get to Staples and do something to say, "We did something. We didn't just wait for the disaster to come to us." Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers in chambers?
Yes, we have two more.
Yes, hello today. My name is Will Tate, and I'm Will Leslie Tate, and I'm here to speak on a situation in Pittsburgh. We do have a problem with the homelessness. You know, I see a, today I looked up on my little makeshift camp, and I seen a paper from Father Ganey, Shelter the Homeless. And he says if you have tents, tarbs, crates, blankets, or whatever, makeshift shelter, bring it if you have it. But see, the issue is that we don't need tents. We don't need crates or blankets or cardboard boxes or anything like that. We need shelter. We need buildings. We need workshops and study having to go to the public, you know, the public libraries around here in Pittsburgh. It's really a problem because you got these people, young people who working in these libraries as security, and they're actually taking care of the homeless people every day. They should be getting two paychecks, one from the security company that they're working from the library, and from the state, and, you know, the county and the city. And I think it's really a shame because every day, too, I see young people constantly that are homeless, and they're, and they're coming out. There's people sleeping on the sidewalks. I mean, that's not good for a city. You know, it's sort of disgraceful. So like I said, if you could, and then, too, I also have a problem acknowledging that you're getting ready to build a homeless shelter down there by the jail. That's not right. Because people are already down, and they feel, you know, distraught about their situation. Why would you put them by a jail? It's not fair. You know, them type of problems cause psychological problems, and there's a lot of people that's homeless that need psychological help. You know, they're walking around, they're not, they're taking medications, and they're not in the right state of mind, when they should be at a place like Woodsville, or, you know, at an institution where they can get the right type of treatment, you know? And I just feel real bad seeing the homeless situation here in Pittsburgh. I think it should be handled better, and that this county and the city should be willing to pay people to help people who are in a less fortunate situation because they are people too, you know? So I just want everybody to acknowledge, and I'll come back again and again until, hopefully they do, that the homeless situation in Pittsburgh is, is worse than I ever seen anywhere I went, and I've done a lot of traveling. Thank you.
Sorry, are there any further speakers? I believe I see one coming forward.
Yes, we have one more.
Good morning. My name is Tom Brady. I live on 352 Camback on Mount Washington. I have lived on that street for over fifty years. I know the street, and I know the neighborhood. Well, I'm here today because I would like to talk to all four councilmen, but I don't have the time. I only have less than three minutes, so I'm going to have to keep on coming back down to talk to each one. Bruce, Corey O'Connor, Teresa Smith, Mr. Coghill. Well, today is Bruce's day. The other day, Bruce, as you remember, on March, we had a meeting up in Grand View, I mean, on Shiloh Street about Bailey Avenue. Well, yesterday, on Monday, at close to quarter to eight, a car was pulling out of Judicial again, and went on Bailey, swung over it, missed it, and banged into the guardrail. Again, we've got to do something. It's not just the speeding on Bailey Avenue. It's the parking. The city put this problem, when they put the planning and zoning, when they made these houses on Camback into apartments. They made fifteen houses into apartments on Camback Street. All those cars cannot park on Camback because if you remember, Bruce, about ten years ago, twelve years ago, we had that big fire. We had to get that Judicial Street cleared off. Now they're parking up on Bailey, right on the corners that you cannot see when you're pouring out. You know, this is not a buggy or a buckboard coming out of the side street. These are cars that go, you know, a hundred and twenty miles. And if you read that report, remember, Bruce, they were going seventy-eight miles an hour on Bailey Avenue, and the speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour, twenty-five miles an hour. It's going to happen one of these days. Someone's going to get killed, and because we don't understand this, we are asking you to come up there and have the meeting, but I was told it's the engineer holding back. I don't understand this. You should have more power than the engineer, saying to him, "Get up there." If he wants to come to work three hours late, he can work three hours later at night. He can do that. You know, if he don't want to do this, send him to the unemployment office. Get a new person there. You cannot fool around. These are taxpayers up there. Want safetiness. As I say, we're trying to get off the back streets to get onto the main streets, and we can't. We can get onto the back streets off the main streets. It's no problem, but getting onto the main street, it is a problem. So Bruce, you know, I'm waiting for you to get hold of us and tell us up in the neighbors of the Mount, on Bay, on Mount Washington, when you want to have this meeting in May, because the people do not believe in you. They think you're just a waste of time, too, just another councilman just sitting here and doing nothing. And there's a lot of them furious about you. And you were at that meeting. You seen them, and they're just keep on nagging us, saying, "What is going to be done?" And I can't answer it. I can't put a fight for you. So I hope you can do something. Thank you very much, and so have a nice day.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I just, I have to say something real quick?
Madam President?
I just want to say that the traffic engineer that was in the department is a very, very good, and just the traffic engineer, but, and I just want to make sure I say, if you can see, but I just want to make sure that you know.
If all of us are talking, maybe I have a few, please, please.
Thank you, Madam President. So I believe that exhausts our list of speakers, which will take us to our standing committee's agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Madam Clerk, I believe we can read Bills 283 and 284 together?
Okay. Bill 283, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 719, entitled, Providing for an Agreement and/or Contract or Use of Existing Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equipment, and/or Services for Various Projects in Connection with the Neighborhood Needs Program in Council District Four, and Providing for Payment of Costs thereof by Transferring Funds Within District Four Neighborhood Needs to Volunteer Field and Sell Them Seen Park. Bill Number 284, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution 855, entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget and the 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Program by Transferring Funds Within District Four Neighborhood Needs to Volunteer Fields, Sell Them Seen Park, and Further Correcting the Name of an Existing Project.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Both bills receiving affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 287.
Bill 287, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title Two, Fiscal Article One, Administration, Chapter 218, Capital Budget and Capital Improvement Plan by Revise in Section 21802 Definitions, 21804, Capital Program Facilitation Committee Process, 21805, Project Authorization, and 21808, Project and Budget Reporting, so as to Add Equity and Project Readiness to Scoring and Expand the City's Provision for the Closure of Capital Project Accounts Included as Part of the City's Controller's Annual Accounting Close and Report so as to Recycle Capital Funds Faster.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 288.
Bill 288, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with Pittsburgh Futures for Professional Services Relating to Leadership Development Training at a Sum Not to Exceed $27,336 for the Payment of Costs thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second. Discussion? Discussion, Councilman Wilson.
So it looks like this bill is related to the 287 as well.
So it looks like this bill is related to the 287 as well, so I would like to understand what, what this is.
Prepare to speak to that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, um, all right. So that'd be great. Director.
Sure. Jay Paul, I'm Director of the Office of Management and Budget. Um, at last week's hearing, I spoke to this topic as well. Um, you know, I believe at last week's hearing, we were considering the acceptance of a grant from the Heinz Endowments to pay this cost. Uh, the, the disagreement comes at no cost to the city. Uh, this is a grant that will support some leadership training and shared goal setting, um, professional development work for members of the mayor's executive staff and department directors. Um, this was a proposal that was originally provided to the Pittsburgh Futures team, I'm sorry, provided by the Pittsburgh Futures team to the, uh, the mayoral administration, I'm sorry, the mayoral transition during the latter portion of last year prior to Mayor Gany taking office. And one which the, uh, the Heinz Endowments separately received from Pittsburgh Futures to request funding which they agreed to provide. So to, to, I, I say that only to address a question that Council President raised last week. Um, this was not a process initiated by the Heinz Endowments or anyone at philanthropy. It was a proposal made by a provider of these kinds of professional development services that the administration, you know, hopes to accept and which we agreed to, to, uh, fund at no cost to the city for what is in the grand scheme of things, I think, a nominal amount.
Okay. Uh, how, how often is the leadership training happening?
Uh, this is for a, essentially a free phase process. Uh, it, it entailed a three-day training for some members of the mayor's executive staff and then two sessions with the departmental leadership alongside the mayor's executive staff. Um, one, a three-day basically, uh, ru-run of the same training the mayor's executive staff received. Uh, on the first three days with the entire cabinet, with the mayor and other members of his team providing some of the coaching through that process. And then a two-day, uh, process of further goal-setting, uh, exercises. So it's a total of nine days of training.
Okay. I, I guess I heard a lot. So I ran into one of the directors. They were talking about the, this training. But I heard mostly the executive staff were on the mayor's side. So, but the directors are a part of this too, right?
Yes, all of them.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Cross.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Director Paul. How are you? I hate to do, I hate to do this. I'm going to make this very brief. But in reference to Mr. Brady's remarks about the situation on, um, Bailey Avenue, uh, we, uh, myself and Bob in, in my office have worked diligently, uh, to fashion a meeting with residents, uh, concerning the problems on Bailey Avenue. Where we have met resistance is from administrators who have steadfastly refused to engage. Uh, and so I'm sending you some email communications so that you can perhaps assist us in breaking through that barrier.
Sure. I, I, I apologize. I didn't catch the entirety of his remarks, but I, I caught the end of them. So please, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll send that my way and I'll, I'll follow through after.
Thanks, Director. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Mr. Chair?
Any?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that since this is now going from the transition team into city council and, or into, I'm sorry, into the city departments and, um, whomever, you know, my concern's always been, um, with foundation funding. Um, sometimes a lot of strings come attached or just some certain goals. And I really want to make sure that these are goals of the administration. Um, and, and so I know that we've discussed this previously, but now since this is now becoming part of our city, I wonder if all the emails and anything is now considered under the right to know since this is now part of, um, part of our, our operations, will be part of our operations. Does, maybe, maybe that's a question for the law department.
Any correspondence as it relates to this process that have occurred since January 3rd would be subject to right to know. Um, but I will, I will again note that there were, have been no conditional provisions attached to any of this by the funders. Uh, the, the proposal for this work was not produced by them and it was not conditional in any way. Uh, it was a proposal produced by the training provider which they independently agreed to fund, but, but no conditions were placed on that support.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to make sure that I also add that we always appreciate when foundations or other, uh, others contribute to the city of Pittsburgh. But we also want to make sure that they come with a very public process. That's all. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 289.
Bill 289, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement with Resource X for Professional Services Relating to Priority-Based Budgeting for a Sum Not to Exceed $150,000 Over Three Years and for the Payment of the Costs thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
The Councilwoman Strasburg?
Thank you. I would love to learn a little bit more about, um, what this would do.
Uh, I can speak to that if that is a pleasure of Councilman.
Thank you. That'd be great.
All right. Patrick Cornell, Deputy Director in the Office of Management and Budget. Um, so we have been partnering with Resource X, um, for a little over a year now. The first year came to us as an engagement, um, as part of the, sorry, I'm looking at my notes on the other screen. Um, as part of a partnership with the Bloomberg, Bloomberg Philanthropies and the National Resources Defense Council for the American Cities Climate Challenge. Um, in 21, we worked with the consultant and departments to split up existing budget lines at that time for, uh, it was fiscal year 2020, we were looking at into their respective programs. Um, so instead of an individual line item for, for example, um, you know, budget software, that rolled up into the operating budget program, you know, fleet, capital, procurement, et cetera. Um, and what we did with that is we scored each program along the former mayor's priorities um, to kind of have a, a better gauge of, you know, what is something that is considered truly essential to the city of Pittsburgh. Um, Resource X terms it, you know, quartile one, quartile two, three, and four. Um, and we use that to really implement some ideas and, and think of some ways to improve city processes. In this case, with respect to climate and resilience. Um, and then midway through 2021, we actually continued our work with Resource X and we used that to, um, collect our budget requests for the 2022 fiscal year. Uh, we added in information tags for climate, for equity. Um, and, you know, we would really like to keep moving through this process um, to, to make this a more, um, program-based budget as opposed to our line items as they currently exist.
It's great to hear that there is, uh, you know, that that prioritization is being implemented. Um, do you see an opportunity to, and, and that, you know, those are the issues that have been kind of focused on through this process? Do you see opportunities to expand it beyond climate and resilience prioritization?
Yes.
With or without this program?
Yes, I do. Um, you know, as the mayor, um, you know, has just released his capital priorities for the 23 fiscal year, those will be tailored for the operating budgets. We'll be able to update, um, you know, the program as it exists now for, for current budget lines and the new priorities from Mayor Gany. Um, and with that, you know, I've already talked to Director Abrams about how to, to really focus in on the equity component. Um, every single budget request that comes through will have general information uh, as to why something is, is being requested. But it'll also now, um, you know, we'll be able to analyze a little more concretely the equity impact and the, the climate impact as well.
That's great. You know, and not to take it off topic too much, but I, I did note and I didn't speak up then, but Bill 287 today really does, uh, amend the code so that it, um, allows for a greater focus, you know, stated focus on equity. So, um, two really laudable goals to be focusing on if this is our value statement as a city, uh, our budget. And, um, I, um, wholeheartedly support it. I just was curious how, how, you know, what the Resource X was actually doing for us. And that makes sense. So, um, the more that we can suss through what is important, what is maybe less of a priority, um, which is always, always challenging, I know, because everyone thinks everything is a priority for their own department. But it's so hard to make those decisions sometimes without additional guide rails or help. Um, it makes sense to me. So thank you for the explanation.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the line of questioning here. Um, so may I ask, Resource X, this is even a more basic level question. Resource X is the company or the product?
Resource X is the company. That is correct. And they have, you know, their tool, uh, is what we have been using, you know, the software as a service platform to, to be able to combine the budget lines, the priorities, the scores, et cetera.
And so is it like, um, we often use the word module. It's not necessarily always the most accurate word. But so this is a company that is separate from the budgeting software that we have. What is our current budgeting software again?
Uh, we are using Questica right now for our budget.
I've lost track. Um, so currently it's Questica. So it works with Questica in order to kind of tag fields so that you can request them out as separate reports?
So the, the way that they will be connected is we, we're able to export our data from Questica, basically just in one, one big Excel file and then import that into Resource X.
Fascinating. And then, so when, as Councilwoman Strasburg was asking you, once we have Resource X, you can define your fields? All right. So you're flagging either for sustainability goals or for resilience goals or, you know, equity goals, like gender equity is, is a, uh, area where we've been requesting better data analysis and tracking? Um, but somehow the software can comb through your raw data of expenditures and know what it was expended, expended on?
So it's, it's working with the budget lines and what would happen? Um, it's a good question about the process itself. So.
I mean, so I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna, I know while you're, while you're thinking, I'm gonna say like, so for example, I think it's always fascinating to me that like at point of service sales now and I go to the drugstore, sometimes it knows that I was spending money on like, you know, health stuff. And sometimes I was spending money on like food. Um, you know, depending on what the store is, you know, when you go to a gas station now, if you're using accounting software, even home-based free accounting online software like Mint.com, it's like, oh, you spent this much money on gasoline because that's how much money you spent at a gas station. Is it something like that where it's understanding the expenditures?
No. So this is, this will not link into the expenditures. Um, you know, JDE does have the, the, a broader level, you know, professional services, operational supplies, fuel, et cetera. So, so there's the, the accounting system is separate. Um, this will use the budget line information, um, and then score the priorities from there. Or we, people will be scoring them based on set definitions. I should have mentioned.
So it depends on what you've already entered in as data?
Correct.
Garbage in, garbage out. So we'll have to, if we want information as council, we will also have to be sure that like what in our titles or in the budget lines that there's some language that is reflective of the program description?
That is correct.
I mean, do we always have eyes? I mean, in, in our legislation and for the public too, right? So in Legistar, is that coding reflected?
The program is not at this point. The, the account information is reflected in legislation in the fiscal impact statement.
Okay. So we're going to have to work on kind of intent or language as we're discussing it. Kind of, I, I guess I'm looking for, again, so the public can know what we're talking about, a consistency between what is coded as the purpose of a program and what we discuss at the table, you know, in the allocations you've just seen us talking about. Like how would this allocation for $150,000 for the Resource X itself be coded?
Uh, in terms of programs.
And then we, that, I'm just, yeah, I'm looking that we're consistent in our public conversation.
Sure. And then, you know, in this case, I would, um, put this under the operating budget program because that's what it is really going to be focused on. Uh, happy to explore any possibility of changing the fiscal impact statement to include program information. I think that'd be useful.
Yeah, that, that summarizes my, my interest. Thank you. I look forward to that. That, that actually sounds like fun. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to our invoices. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
So move.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Invoices are approved. That takes us to P cards. Need a motion to approve the P cards?
Mr. Chair, we have an interdepartmental transfer.
Oh, I apologize. I did not see that. Uh, motion to approve the interdepartmental transfers?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers are approved. Now need a motion to approve the P cards?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilman O'Connor. We have one deferred paper, Bill 32.
Bill 32, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I, Administrative Article III Organizations, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety by Adding a New Section 11617, Regulation of Pedestrian Stops by Officers of the Bureau of Police.
Motion, motion to hold four weeks?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill be held four weeks. That moves us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill for supplemental paper is Bill 32.
Bill 325, Resolution Approving, I'm sorry?
Sorry, my mistake.
Bill 325, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure That the Concrete Portion of Foster Square Be Paved with Asphalt In accordance with Section 141706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 326.
Bill 326, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure That the Concrete Portion of Harbison Avenue Be Paved with Asphalt In accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 327.
Bill 327, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure That the Concrete Portion of Vanaya Street Be Paved with Asphalt In accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 278.
Bill 278, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Works On behalf of the city to enter into an agreement or the use of existing agreements For the Professional Landscape Architectural Services For Sheridan Park Phase One Design Between the City and Cavlon Design Associates, Inc. The Total Not to Exceed Cost of $300,000.
Motion to approve for brief discussion.
Second.
Madam President, please.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say thank you to everyone who's been working on this. Sheridan Park is the master plan. It was that, um, we worked on with the community a couple of years ago under the Paduta administration. And I'm glad to see that the current administration, Mayor Gany, is continuing with the efforts and additional, and seeking funding and, and helping us with this process. I want to say that of all the master plans I've seen, I've never saw a process with more kids involved. And I was so excited because this is going to be their park when by the time we're done with it. Um, so I just want to say that, uh, thank you to all the kid, all the young people that participated. Um, and I, I can't wait for it to happen for Sheridan. It's, it's long overdue that some dollars like this came to our side of town for parks other than, um, rad parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill Opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill two seventy-nine.
Bill two seventy-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works. To apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program. To provide funding for the Allegheny Riverfront Park renovation project. The grant proposal includes an ask of $250,000 with a match of $500,000 from the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust. For a total project cost of $750,000 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill two eighty.
Bill two eighty, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. To apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program. To provide funding for a trail condition study. The grant proposal includes an ask of $73,000 with a total local match of $73,000. To come out of the 2019 City of Pittsburgh capital budget for a total project cost $146,000 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Yes. Um, yeah, so my question, um, if anybody can answer it is, is this trail condition study citywide? Or is this just one certain project?
Kim Lucas, Acting Director for the City's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. This would be a citywide trail assessment. So we currently have thirty-six miles of trails. Anybody who's been on them know that a number of them have some serious structural issues. And so this is the opportunity to collect that data and to prioritize investments based on condition and what he considerations.
So, so Director, this is existing trails? This is not consist of like trails we want to put in greenways or build, building new trails? This is just the existing?
Correct, existing trails.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Director, you know that we have the trail in, on Crafton Boulevard that we've been waiting for and it's now delayed again. I actually started this trial, I think, maybe three, four years, maybe even longer before I was ever elected. With a group of, a few group of residents, few residents, I should say, in my district. And, um, we've just been waiting for this trail to come to fruition. I don't understand. I know that there's one issue after another, but it seems like sometimes we make half the dis, the issues. But here we have another, every administration have a new delay. And so here we have another delay and it was supposed to be done this spring or started this spring. And now it's not until next fall, maybe spring. So part of that trail is that there's some structural concerns initially with the hillside coming down on the state side. But I think Director, previous Director, um, addressed that. When she worked with Senator Fontana and others. So I'm just not sure. I just want to put it out there that, you know, it's, we are eagerly waiting the completion of this trail. We did some announcements. It was supposed to be done, you know, things were supposed to move. And yet here we are, uh, waiting again. So I just want to make sure that when we're moving forward and looking at these, these issues. That you're not forgetting that there is a, a trail that's half completed in my district. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Director?
No, just to, to, to note that this is not, you know, competing projects. This is, um, a planning exercise out of our planning shop and the request for grant money is specifically for work of this nature. Um, with the West End Trolley Trail, there is also a funding gap there that we have identified potential county resources that we're gonna, we're looking into pursuing. And, you know, hopefully advancing that project as quickly as possible.
I mean, it's just, it's, I, and I also want to know if you've ever looked at, Tom Murphy had trails and I. They were all over the place, all over the city. Some connected, some did not. And I wonder if there's a chance that we open up some of those trails to allow additional places for people to walk and bike. In the city of Pittsburgh. If we could look at those again, because there's, some of them are still in my district. I still see signage. I still see paths on some of them. And it might just be worth, instead of reinventing the wheel, open up the trails that are already existing. So I, I just don't know if, if that's something that, um, maybe you could look into. I know everybody's plates are full and, and everybody's working with short staffed and everything. But we did a lot of this work even when we were under Act forty-seven and short staffed too. So I'm hoping that we can find some way to, to get through some of these, these bigger projects too. And, but also consider, consider the, um, maybe that might be a way to not have to reinvent the wheel. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a. More questions.
House Wilson?
Uh, yeah, so is this gonna be done in-house or are we contracting with a separate, um, business?
So this would be ultimately contracted out to, so we would hire a consultant to perform the data collection and analysis.
Okay, so that the RFP is already out?
No, no, this is, um, so, you know, in the vein of consideration about all the assets that the city is responsible for. And the concerns that we were already aware of and that have been raised more recently. This is one of our many asset classes that we are looking for opportunities to evaluate and prioritize because we know that there are issues out there. So we have not drafted an RFP. We've simply, when the DCNR grant came available and we knew that trail planning was a part of that eligibility list for funding that was available. We worked with Friends of the Riverfront and Riverlife to come up with scope items. And as they are the parties that work on the sort of daily maintenance of our trails, they have, you know, great ideas and the best understanding of what the needs are. So we've drafted sort of what we think a scope of work would look like and the things that we would want to evaluate, but we have not proceeded with any sort of procurement.
Okay, so there will be an RFP to come.
There would be some sort of procurement, whether that's a standalone RFP or it would be something that we would use our ITQ list. Because it's, you know, a total hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so project.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong. But I heard you say that the guidance was mostly from? People that would have experience on the riverfront trails?
So this is led by our internal staff, our planners internal, but we did consult with Riverlife and Friends of the Riverfront. Because they are active parties in maintaining our trail network. And so we wanted to make sure we consulted with the folks that are out there on a regular basis, taking care of a, a large mileage amount of those trails. To make sure that we're not missing any.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm curious to know if they. Have been to Riverview Park. Um, you know, just curious if, if they're. You know, in touch with what's needed there. Friends Riverview Park meets and I'll, I'll check with them. I'm, I'm not sure if I've ever heard Friends of the Riverfront. What'd you say?
Friends of the Riverfront?
Yeah.
And Riverlake?
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll check. I'm curious to know. You know, how much they would, um. Be familiar. So they're gonna go out to each park or we're directing them to go out to each park? Or whoever is, whoever is contract is gonna get, literally go to each park and look at every trail that we have in the city?
We have thirty-six miles of designated multimodal trails. So there are trails within parks that may be pedestrian trails. I'm sure there's many, many more miles of hiking trails and things like that. This is for identified, recognized, uh, multimodal trails as part of our transportation network. And so all thirty-six miles, which are citywide, would be part of this plan.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Gross.
Thank you. Hi, Director. Um, so, you know, I'm supportive, definitely of getting a DCNR grant. And, you know, there's lots of room for trails improvements. I will also note, as Councilman Smith did, that I have areas where there's. Trails that haven't been built yet that people have been waiting for for a very long time, especially on the Allegheny River edge. But now I'm confused because I, I think I understand Councilman Wilson's line of questioning, which is that, I suppose this is just riverfront trails? Or are you looking at all of the trails? You said the multimodal network, meaning trails that are in, you know, greenways, hillsides, parks and, or riverfronts?
If there, it would be in addition to the riverfront trails. So trails that are identified as, you know. Multimodal, meaning they're not just gravel paths inside of a park intended for walking.
Okay, but we're gonna include like the, um, I think the groups that are active in my, like, uh, Rad Park. It are like the Pittsburgh, used to be Trails Group, but now they've changed their name, I think, Trail Pittsburgh or something. So not those mountain bike paths?
You know, I would have to check on what exactly is included. Um, we do have our bike plus master plan that has a good map of those, of that network. So I would need to refer to that and, and the specific requests you have.
Sure, that'd be, I think that might help us all understand kind of like what, what is this? What's, what's being studied here and what isn't being studied here? And then, you know, I'm supportive either way, but I think it's, it's important for us to know. So that we don't have the wrong expectations from, from.
Right. And the scope, you know, for the grant application, that's the phase we're at. We haven't written a draft scope of work yet for any consultant to do this work. So there's, there's definitely opportunity and time to make sure that we're including all of these considerations. Right now, we say we've got a trail network of, you know, thirty-six or so miles and that we want to evaluate the condition of it to see where we need to rehab it. But I'm sure that there's opportunity to adjust the scope once, if and when we were to get awarded this grant. And actually begin crafting a scope of work for a consultant to do the work.
Right, just so we could very clearly say that with this grant, we're doing these things, but not those things, or, or we're doing all of the things.
Yep. And sitting also, you can't see, but Dave Munson, uh, one of my principal planners is sitting across the table from me right now. So he's hearing all this feedback and taking notes because he's the one managing the grant application and also, uh, the trans work.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill two eighty-one.
Bill two eighty-one, resolution amending resolution number five eighty-two entitled. Resolution providing for an agreement with the Pittsburgh Public Schools and West Penn Allegheny Health System, Inc. Granting rights of entry for foot traffic of staff and students onto licensed premises to PPS during designated times and dates. To add the Director of Finance to be an additional signatory for the execution of agreements that this resolution would authorize.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Council Wilson?
Sorry, I'm having trouble figuring out if I should just say something or if you can see my hand. Yeah, this looks interesting. I'm curious to, to know what this means.
I see who may be here to discuss.
Does any of the members know? I mean, just happy to.
I was curious myself.
Yeah, it looks like an individual project.
It just seems like right away they can, you know, it has to come through us, I guess, for WPH to give right away. I'm not quite sure myself though.
Right of entry for foot traffic.
I don't see Jeffrey with us. I'm not sure if Director Lucas can address it.
Looks like it gives Director of Finance. Signatory power as well. So maybe they're. Get into this.
I'm sorry, I stepped away for a moment, moment. Which item?
This is the, um. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but I was just, I'll just say this is a PPS and WPAHS. Right of entry. Agreement.
Bill two eighty-one, correct her.
I'm not sure on that one.
Okay, not a big deal. I just, it seems like it's, it's not like a individual project. I was just curious about it.
Not sure.
Okay. Let's just motion approve. I'll just ask the question offline.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill two eighty-two.
Bill two eighty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. To enter into an agreement or the use of existing agreements between the city and Lori Hepner. For the creation and installation of public art as part of the New Davis Avenue Bridge at a cost not to exceed $30,000.
Uh, motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman.
Yeah, Mr. Yeah, the only question I have is, um, Lori Hepler, I'm not familiar with her work, but, uh, does this need to be approved by? Our art department?
Sure, Art Commission.
Art Commission, I'm sorry.
Hi, I can speak to this. This is Anthony Catalini from the Public Art and Civic Design Division. Lori was selected from, um, among nineteen applicants to the request for proposals that we put out. Um, and yes, uh, the final design of the artwork will need to be approved by the city's art commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman?
Well, everyone knows that, um, I'm excited about the Davis Avenue Bridge, uh, being built. But this is the, the artwork that I believe is gonna go on both sides of, of the, um, of the bridge. So the, the part that, uh, where you could enter from Brighton Heights and then also. You know, when you, um, enter or leave Riverview Park. So just, just excited to, to see that this is, um. You know, come under fruition. Small, uh, important step in the beginning and then, um. You know, I'm not sure if there's someone on the line that could, it's not a big deal, but if someone does know, like, the, does the artwork have to wait before the bridge? I'm sorry, does the artwork have to wait until the bridge is installed or is that gonna be done prior to the bridge being installed?
Um, the, the goal of the artwork is for, uh, the, the artist, uh, i- is being, um, sort of onboarded right now. So we want to start them in the planning and the community engagement as early as possible. So that their design can be integrated in the eventual, um, implementation of the bridge. So, um, know that the artwork does not have to wait until the bridge is fully finished. But depending on, uh, what the actual form of the art ends up being, it will be created sort of in tandem with the, the fabrication and, and installation of the bridge.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I just want to congratulate Councilman Wilson for having another project. I'm looking at this agenda and a lot of the projects are in the North Side. I just want to congratulate him for the work that he's doing and accomplishment in, uh, North Side.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. One supplemental paper, Bill three oh seven.
Bill three oh seven, resolution amending resolution one eighteen, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service. And the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an amended professional services agreement and/or a contract. With Ceridian Human Capital Management, Inc. By changing a technical error below to reflect the correct year.
Motion to approve, very brief discussion, please.
Second.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, as you can see in the bill, i- it's technical in nature. It is only to correct the, uh, uh, to reflect the correct year. Director Manuel is here. If members do have questions, but I have none at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Land Use Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. One deferred paper, Bill sixty-five.
Bill sixty-five, resolution amending resolution number eight sixty-three entitled. Adopting and approving the 2019 CDBG program by transferring remaining funds from the Jane Street Step Reconstruction Project. To the North Side Christian Health Center, $76,000 and traffic calming, $14,220 and 54 cents.
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held two weeks. Our new paper, Bill two ninety.
Bill two ninety, ordinance amended Pittsburgh City Code Title Seven. Business licenses, Article Three, Chapter seven twenty-one and seven twenty-three, Article Nine and Title Ten. Buildings, Chapter one thousand four, Section one oh three, point five, point one, to simplify legacy license types.
Motion to approve, discussion. Second.
Yeah, is the, is, uh, Director Kinter? Here? Like to highlight?
Yes, yes.
All right, Director, this is, this is the moment where we tell the public that we're trying to make it easier for them.
That's what they said the first time.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, yes, if you, if you don't mind, I'm just briefing the, uh, council and the public. I know we've had a, a briefing. Separate for council members, but, uh, something that you've been working on with, um, the administration.
Sure, thank you, Councilman. Um, so this, um, bill, PLI is proposing, um, the elimination of several business licenses.
of several business licenses that we find are duplicative of the adopted building code. Um, so we are seeking to eliminate the transient merchant license, trade fair license, amusement place and producer license, mechanical amusement devices license, and assigned maintenance certification. Um, so we performed, um, a review of the legislative history of several of these licenses, many of them dating back to the nineteen seventies, and, uh, they had good reason for being adopted at the time. So, for example, the transient merchant license is a license for essentially a pop-up shop, right? Something that's going to be stood up in a room or an apartment, a, a shop or a building for no, no more than a hundred days. Um, but our ability to regulate that, um, comes now from the building code and is really more complete and thorough and ensures appropriate life safety measures are taking place in that, in that space. And so that license is really, um, um, an extra burden for someone who's trying to open up a pop-up shop in addition to the zoning and building code requirements that we would expect them, um, to adhere to. So these, these licenses that we've identified, um, are meant to, um, be eliminated to remove some barriers for business owners. Um, I know a, a hot topic one is the signed maintenance certification, which is really a, um, maintenance license to ensure that, um, signs are in good repair. Um, you know, we, we've done a review of the data there too and find that signs that are not in good repair, um, are a, a pretty small complaint type, um, but also very visible for the right of way, from the right of way. So we believe that we can address those through the typical code enforcement process, um, rather than requiring this proactive signed maintenance certification. So happy to address any questions or concerns about the licenses that we are proposing for elimination, um, in this, this ordinance.
All right, great. So, one of the takeaways is that you won't need a license if you want to have a Pac-Man video game. Is that true?
Yes, that is true. So the, um, mechanical amusement device is for pool tables, jukeboxes, gambling machines. Um, so we are proposing elimination of that license type.
All right, and then an, another one I just want to kind of break down, um, because it's, it's a little wonky to try and understand some of this stuff. So, I'm a business owner. I'm going to put on a new sign that's going to project into the right of way. Um, do I need to, does this help me at all?
Yeah, so if you want to project a new sign into the right of way, you're still going to need a sign permit. You're still going to need zoning approval and likely approval from Domi, um, for the encroachment into the right of way. With the elimination of the signed maintenance certification, what you will not need is an annual license for us to track that sign and proactively inspect it for maintenance. Again, we would handle any maintenance issue as a, as a typical code enforcement complaint. So it eliminates that additional sign requirement.
Okay, um, and then, I, I think there's some less, uh, less involvement if the sign is not projecting into right of way and it's just kind of tacked up on the, on the structure, right?
Correct. Again, uh, we, through the sign permit process, will ensure that the sign is appropriately attached to the structure, um, and can beat the snow and wind loads. Zoning's going to approve the, the sign for the zoning code conformance, and those requirements are remaining the same. This is an additional license on top of that that we're proposing to eliminate.
Okay, all right, well, um, I don't have any other, you know, I'd like to continue to highlight, uh, some of these things, but members might have some other, uh, questions. I'll let them get to it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Uh, personally, I say there are people doing work in my house, so it may be very loud. I hope you can hear me. Um, I, um, I have reviewed the memo from your office, Director Kinter. It's very, very helpful. Um, and the bill does have, um, as you say, it's definitely legacy licensing structures. Um, I think all council members have, uh, are supportive of the last item, which is this legacy signs, um, which I think each one of us has one of those stories of, of why, why was this sign that was been okay for fifty, sixty years? Um, in my, in my district, it was Grocery Italiana in Bloomfield. Why is it suddenly needing thousands of dollars of permitting fees? So this is a corrective, also Councilman Wilson's bill is a helpful corrective to this just mismatch of reality and ordinance. Um, but I believe that we should probably, as a council, give a bit more depth of thought and discussion to some of the other sections. While I trust your professional judgment, um, you know, un, fully, a hundred and fifty percent, it's just that kind of, um, you know, I've been here nine years and I, I, there's a deep memory of some of these things that I didn't personally experience, but my constituents did live through. And, and one of them that is coming up to me, um, is, you know, there are lots, there's always, we, we try to avoid unintended consequences or downsides of, of these things. Um, I want to go to the part where in your memo it mentions farmers selling their own produce. And if you could help me understand, um, not amusements, is that trade? Maybe it's number two, one or two, I'm not sure. Um, that how would this then affect people selling produce, whether they were the farmer or not the farmer? And there's a lot else tied up in this. Some people think it's, you know, really important that in our own city farmers markets, um, that we require the farmers to sell their own produce? Because it avoids then just kind of like someone just vending, um, produce that we can't verify the source of, you know? But on the other hand, um, I've had an entire post agenda about the dynamics of farmers markets now that they're so tremendously popular and, you know, most of us want more. Uh, a lot of council members want to see more farmers markets in their districts. We have a, a new emphasis here in twenty-twenty-two on, on making sure that neighborhoods that don't have access to fresh foods or quarter markets do get those. That we've overstretched our farmers, right? The farmers need to farm. But somehow in our ordinances, we've been requiring them to then personally be at that table. And it's a burden when there's some like hundred and thirty farmers markets throughout the county. You can't possibly be at them all and also farm. Um, and so how would it work now? Would, would, if we delete out the section that we're in and do it the new way?
Yeah, um, thanks for the question. So I think you're referring to the transient merchant license. In its legislative history, it talks about an exemption for farmers who are selling their own produce to not have to get that, that transient merchant license. Um, so with the elimination of this license, essentially what we're saying is conform to the building code. So if you're selling food in a location, we're going to review, um, per the building code for that use and per the zoning code as well. Um, there is no requirement regarding who is selling that food under the building code. Um, I don't believe that there is one under the zoning code either. Um, so in terms of what would be changing, not, not much would be changing here with that elimination, um, because farmers were already exempt from the transient merchant license.
If they were selling themselves.
If they were selling themselves, yeah, their own produce, right.
So that might have been why we had that weird requirement at our city farmers' farmers' markets, in fact. The legacy license.
Yeah, potentially.
So that it, they didn't have to get the transient license. It's because sometimes things just take on a life of their own and actually no one knows why they were doing it that way and they assumed it's happening enough.
Yes.
But so what if, what if you are, hey, I don't want to eliminate a path that might actually be helpful, right? What if you're selling something and you're not in a building? Do you, how do you fall under the building code?
So it would depend on the structure, right? Because our purpose under the building code is to ensure that whatever use under that structure is occurring is happening in a safe way. So our, yeah, right, so it, it may not be regulated by the building code at all, right? So, um, a standard.
Are you just illegal? That's what, I just want to make sure we're not elimi, and I just haven't had time to process this off. Got the memo, it came in.
No, I think it's a great question.
And I'm just trying to kind of follow up the logic then to see, like, sometimes, as we've learned with Airbnbs, being a, a vague, absent in the code is not actually a good thing, right? You don't want there to just be a vacuum. Um, you want there to be a path, you want the path to not be overly burdensome, so I'm just trying to play this out.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm tracking with you here. I think the way that it, um, would be regulated, if not under the licensing code and not under the building code, is the zoning code. So can this parcel, this space be used for that use? That is the question. Um, so if there is no.
Sidewalk?
Right, so in sidewalks, we have, you know, stationary vendors, we have mobile vehicle vendors. We're not proposing the elimination of those types of licenses and, um, understand that Domi, DPW, the Parking Authority, PLI, all have an interest in use of that public space appropriately. Um, this, um, elimination of the transient merchant license doesn't eliminate a zoning review of a private parcel for that type of use, that farmers market use. In a public space, um, there's approvals there too. So I don't think it, um, would greatly affect those uses or suddenly make them unregulated.
Right, so it seems to me like we're retreating here from business licensing. And we're, like, here you're placing regulatory oversight into building and zoning and Domi. And I think I have mixed feelings about that, just like the concept of it. I understand it on the org chart, where the competency, the skill sets, the, like, the or- organizational chart infrastructure is. But as terms of, like, what our city jurisdiction is, it kind of gives me a pause. I don't know that I want to retreat back from business licensing more than we already have. These are ones that have stood up the test of time since the nineteen seventies. I'm not sure I want to retreat from them. Um, I'm just going to switch topics a little bit. Um, similarly, I, I, I totally support Councilman Wilson saying that, you know, we don't want to create a, an obstructive pathway, that stupidly bureaucratic to someone having a Pac-Man game. Pac-Man is fun. Let's, it's okay to have fun. But I also know that I'm not entirely sure I understand the changing dynamics of online gambling and how that is currently manifested or not manifested in our mostly drinking establishments where these games are. Um, I know anecdotally, people are illegally gambling. But then also, at the same time, there is a, a new world that I don't even entirely understand of legal online gambling. And so it, it kind of, I felt like in your memo, it was kind of like, oh, this is like a kind of thing like people did in the nineteen seventies. They were like online gambling. We're in the nineteen nineties and people just don't do that anymore. But they're, they're doing it in bars in Pittsburgh. And so, and they're not supposed to be. Um, and so that these bills were put in place with a dollar amount, um, this, this, these business licenses were created with a dollar amount that was prohibitive, but also, um, you know, a significant amount that it was, um, something people wouldn't do more casually, but also created a, an environment where we, we were able to regulate them because we knew where they were. Is it, has been, is, I think, important. Um, and so maybe you can help me again. It's, it's difficult for me because this is a lot of different sections of licenses, making changes. Um, help me understand this part. Um, I, and again, I, I hope you're not going to say that we're just like, well, this is not a problem anymore, so we don't need to do it.
Yeah, um, so I think maybe a few things. One is that this amusement devices legislation as it currently stands regulates non-gambling machines, gambling machines, um, pool tables and jukeboxes, and co- talks about, um, entering coins for play, right? Um, the reality is that I can open up my phone and gamble online right now in an app, um, anywhere in, in the city. Um, so this licensure doesn't really connect to illegal gambling in the way that it could be properly regulated by state entities that regulate gambling. Um, in addition, in terms of, um, in terms of illegal gambling, knowing that a jukebox is at a bar, um, isn't, uh, halting illegal gambling in its tracks in nuisance bars. Um, so I think, you know, where the initial intent of this legis- legislation revolves around physical places where you would go, um, to gamble, we're just not living in that, that world anymore. Um, illegal gambling is happening everywhere.
It is happening everywhere, but that doesn't mean it isn't happening bars. So that actually still is.
Sure, it certainly is. And I guess, you know, the open question for council and, you know, for you to consider as well is, is it a good use of PLI's time? Um, in terms of ensuring safety of the built environment, life safety, really honing in on, um, PLI's certifications and our technical knowledge, um, and sort of the, the path that we've gone to ensure that we are upholding life safety, building maintenance, um, and building code requirements.
Again, this is the theme of like, we're retreating from business licensing because the organizational chart competency is in building and zoning. Like, I'm glad for the robust capacities that you have built up in building and zoning, because my district has had the, you know, plurality of the building and zoning issues in the city for the last six, seven years, right? There was a year where districts have had half of every, I mean, half of the total number of building permit requests, right? So it's just a crazy outsized amount that we really needed that, that increased competency. But, um, I, I just, I think I just have not had time to process through ev- anything but the sign part. Like, the sign part, I know, like, I, I can see that this is like this clouds are clearing and the sun is shining on this change. Like, this is a good change. But the, like, one through nine, I'm still trying to ground truth and figure out if there's, um, different consequences here and, and how I feel about them. Um, maybe, I think I've kind of made my point of like, I'm just kind of not entirely comfortable. If, for, I'm really comfortable with number ten. Um, and I'm not sure that as members, I haven't had conversations with other members. I'm grateful, again, for the memo, the briefing, and, um, you know, we've had a couple of weeks to, to kind of chew on it, but I don't, I don't think I'm done, um, getting there. So I'll, 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 I'll turn it over, Mr. Chair, and, uh, I may come back again. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Kraus?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Councilman Coghill. While, while we're waiting on Councilman Kraus, should I proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, Director Kinter, you know, I, I also have the utmost confidence in you as to what your department needs and what you could filter out from past, you know, license and fees and things of that nature. And you know, we've had this conversation many, many times. Myself is a contractor and I know contractors, they shy away from doing business in the city because of the regulations and, and stringent, you know, policies that we have, which I know most of them are there to protect us and, and that's great. Um, I want to commend Councilman Wilson, you know, any red tape that we can eliminate from PLI, I think is beneficial not only to the public, but to the contractors, but especially to your, what is already scarcely thin-staffed, um, from, you know, enforcing these such things, correct?
Correct.
Yep, so, no, I just, I love the path. I trust your judgment as to what is needed, what is not needed. Um, keep cutting it out, uh, you know, the less red tape, the better for doing business in the city and for your department as well. Thanks.
Councilman?
Councilman?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I just want to say real quick, while I hear what Councilwoman Gross is saying, it's, you know, the concerns. But I also want to say that this, it's my understanding the state changed the law so that machines are allowed just about anywhere anyway. Now, maybe we could do something different, but I don't know that we could do anything in regards to not allowing the gambling in the city of Pittsburgh because the state allows it now. Because I'm actually dealing with an issue in a residential area. So it's commercial across the street, residential the other side. So, you know, sometimes people don't want those things in the residential area, but they're okay with it in a business area. So I understand what she's saying because, you know, it depends on where it is. But I also know that I don't believe that we can do anything about it because since the state changed their law not too long ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Councilman Kraus back with us? No? Any further discussion? Council, second round, Councilwoman Gross.
I just hope that members understand that this isn't only doing the change to the Fair Fairs license and amusement places. But so I'm not sure if the director mentioned all of the sections. He probably did at the top, Director, but I'm just going to repeat it. So eliminating the transient merchants license. What I fear is that it would make it harder to do kind of pop-up sales, including, I'm not understanding the kind of like farmers market implications. And if we don't give a path to something that doesn't necessarily make it easier, sometimes it prevents people or they get penalized. So for example, you know, not having Airbnb legislation not only led to us not being able to track and regulate and inspect them and possibly creating these nuisance and dangerous behaviors that we're seeing. It also prevented some people from operating because they just got a different answer. It, you know, different, each operator, potential operator got a different answer every time they went to the desk. Some people just kind of like went straight through and other people had thousands and thousands of dollars of burdensome requests because they were being regulated as bed and breakfast, for example, which is a different thing. And so I'm afraid that where sometimes we have very clear business licenses will be leading to a nebulous situation in the building or zoning code. Because we just have, I'm not sure, I'm hearing a lot of feedback from members. Maybe they've talked, you know, and I could talk to members before Tuesday to see what their thoughts are, and they're already comfortable. Trade fairs license being eliminated, which is requires for an event in which 10 or more merchants assemble to sell goods or services? I want that to be, I want more street fairs. I love them. I think they're great. So maybe that's, you know, we're just putting that in DOMI instead of in business licensing, amusement places and producers licenses. Again, is there, what I'm fearing is that there would be a place where the building and zoning permitting process is more burdensome, even though we have a higher competency in it. There are a lot of costs to building and zoning permits. And how does that equate? I don't really see that. Mechanical amusement devices licenses, we talked about that being eliminated. That's section five, section five, or section four. Section five is the sign maintenance certification. Again, I'm really happy that we're making our legacy signs not require new occupancy codes and things like that. So I'll stop. I'm going to abstain today. Again, I'm not sure that we've had enough robust discussion to figure out whether we really should be retreating from the business license processes and that it is not just creating new and different red tape and putting them in building and zoning, which I, you know, Councilwoman Coghill said, cutting, he's supportive of cutting red tape. I am too in a little place, but I don't want there to be just a different, more burdensome set of red tape for some of these activities, which to me create the pack for the smaller vendors, the temporary vendors, the people who aren't bricks and mortar, who, and the kind of street life activities that we talk about fostering a lot, the small street festivals, the neighborhood festivals. I want to make sure that I understand like, well, what path are they supposed to take now? So I'll stop there, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Two abstentions, I believe.
Yes.
So affirmative recommendation. Thank you. That takes us to Bill 291.
Bill 291, resolution approving and conditional use application under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Article IV, Chapter 910, Section 1001 D1 to Meyer, Ankovich and Scott on behalf of 306 Avenue Property LLC for the transfer of development rights involving 33 dwelling units from 130 through 165th Avenue, Zone GTA Golden Triangle, Sub District 8, and five dwelling units from 417 Wood Street, Zone GTA Golden Triangle, Sub District 8, to 306 Avenue, Zone GTA Golden Triangle, Sub District 8, First Ward, Council District Number Six.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for cablecast public hearing. Bill 292.
Bill 292, ordinance accepting a new street name Cedarwood Place in the 28th Ward of the city as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in February of 2022. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 300.
Bill 300, resolution promoting affordable housing in the city by exploring the expansion of limited equity housing corporatives.
Motion to approve?
Brief discussion?
Discussion.
Can we defer to Councilwoman Gross?
Yep, Councilwoman?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm excited about this bill and I thank Councilwoman Smith for bringing it up. And I've been doing research on this issue as well. I've been talking to the administration. The city planning director is on a trip to Germany with, I think, one of our sister cities. So I'd like to take about two weeks so we can talk through the details with the planning. So I'll motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for two weeks. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. First new papers, Bill 285.
Bill 285, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the 810 West North Avenue.
Question for her?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill 286.
Bill 286, resolution requesting the approval of an intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license from Comer Pub for Bauer Hill Road, Mount Lebanon, to the applicant Pasha Cafe for the premises located at 808 Ivy Street, known as Pasha Cafe pursuant to amended Pennsylvania liquor code.
Needs to be held for public hearing. Is that a motion to hold for public hearing? Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. Second. That's okay. All those in favor of holding for a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for cablecast public hearing. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have some meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold our regular regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, May 10th and Wednesday, May 11th, respectively. Speaker registration ends at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday and Wednesday mornings. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage. You may also email to City Clerk's Office at cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Also, Wednesday, May 11th at 1:30 p.m., council will hold interviews for the directorships of the Department of Public Works, the Department of Vomitability and Infrastructure, and for the Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as for appointments to the Equipment Leasing Authority. Is there anything else from members?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Councilmember Burgess?
Yes, I am saddened to report that former president of the school board Sylvia Wilson's son passed recently. And I'd just like to call for a moment of silence in memory of him and support and sympathy to Sylvia. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there anything else from members? If not, need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn me.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.